To approve the flag of the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you choose the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, just knowing all of the reports were handled under the work session except for administration or community survey items.
Oh, I thought we were covering that at the work session.
That was my fault.
All right. Okay, any motions?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's adopted. First thing, we have a presentation. It's not a real formal presentation, but as everyone knows, we were recognized by Safewise as the safest community or safest city in Minnesota. So, and this is, what, each of the last five years, I think, we've been on there, or?
Four out of the last five years. We're in the top five, yep.
So, that's a tremendous credit to the police department and administration, and yeah. Here's the certificate if anybody wants to see. I think that's all we're gonna do for the presentation, so. Moving on, public comment. Anyone here for public comment? All right, we'll move on to consent.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
It's motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is passed. On to public hearings. Livable Communities Act.
All right, I promise I'm gonna keep this moving so I don't have too many slides to go through.
Thank you.
All right, so before the council opens the public hearing, I'm just gonna give a quick overview of the Livable Communities Act, since we do have some new council members, since the last time these goals were adopted, or rather, the city opted in to participate. So, the Livable Communities Act was adopted by the Minnesota Legislature in 1995. It's implemented right now by the Metropolitan Council, and it is basically a program that provides funding for communities to invest in economic revitalization, workforce, and affordable housing, and then really that transit-oriented development. It is voluntary, so you don't have to participate, but if you do want to, you have to opt in. So, to compete for LCA funding, the local government organizations must meet certain criteria. These are the criteria that basically need to be met to opt in to the program. The first is to adopt long-term affordable and lifecycle housing goals. This is really what is the first step to opt into the program, and it runs on a 10-year cycle. The second one is to develop a housing action plan. Really, the purpose of that plan is to accomplish these goals that a city adopts, and then the local government organizations must also spend 85% of the required affordable and lifecycle housing opportunities amount, or ALHOA, for each year of participation. And really, that dollar amount is just an expense of local dollars on activities that, again, help you reach these goals. And then finally, to actually receive any dollars from the LCA, so you apply for a grant, you are awarded a grant, to actually get the dollars, a city must also have a local fair housing policy. So, specific to Elko New Market in regards to the long-term affordable and lifecycle housing goals, Elko New Market did opt into the program in the last decade, so 2011 to 2020. Since 2020, we have not adopted new or updated goals, so as of right now, we are not participating in this program for 2021 through 2030. And so, the ask for tonight is that the council consider adopting these goals to participate in the program. The affordable housing goal, like it sounds, is really specific to developing or fostering affordable housing units. The methodology for developing these numbers is pretty straightforward. The upper end of the range is based specifically on the need identified by the Met Council of affordable housing. For Elko New Market, for this 10-year period, that is 326 units, and that is reiterated in our 2040 comp plan as well. And then, to identify the lower end of the range, the Metropolitan Council has adopted this methodology where that upper-end need is just multiplied by 55%. My understanding is that 55% is kind of identified as the number of housing units, affordable housing units, rather, that could be built or constructed with the dollars available in the LCA account. So, the proposed affordable housing goals ranges 179 units to 326. And then, the other goal is the lifecycle housing goal. This goal, unlike the affordable housing, is geared more so towards just ensuring that communities allow for a variety of housing types to serve, you know, residents and people at all ages. And this number is determined based on the total land acreage expected to develop as multifamily over the next decade, times the median density of those respective acreages. So, for Elko New Market, the total acreage guided to multifamily or would allow multifamily is almost 44, and then the median density is 20 units per acre.
In regards to the requirement that a city adopt the housing action plan, the Metropolitan Council has opined that cities' comprehensive plans fulfill that requirement. We do have a chapter specific to housing and estates, pretty explicit goals that would help us meet the affordable and lifecycle housing goals that we consider tonight.
And then, in regards to the ALHOA amount, for the past several years of participation, the Scott County CDA, their spending has actually fulfilled this requirement on behalf of the city, and we anticipate that, moving forward, that will continue. And then finally, again, at some point, if the council does choose to opt into this program, we apply for funding and receive it, we would need to adopt a local fair housing policy. Doesn't need to happen immediately, but something to consider for the future.
So, at this time, I'm just asking the council to hold the required public hearing related to participation in the LCA program and the proposed affordable lifecycle housing goals, and then consider adoption of resolution number 21-63.
Okay, thank you. So, open the public hearing at 7:08. Anyone? Patrick, you got anything for us? All right, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:08. Counsel, discussion or motions?
What's a typical grant for funding?
That's a great question. I'll get back to it.
Two no, though, which I did not mention, in 2012, the city did apply for grant funding to clean up the dump site on the CDA library senior housing building, and we received funding through that to do that, so.
It doesn't seem like there's any harm in being part of this, so.
Motion to approve resolution 2163.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, it passes. On to general business.
So, under general business tonight, we have an ordinance for council consideration to address pawnbrokers and precious metal dealers. The council recall that we've placed a moratorium, put it in place this year to allow sufficient time for us to develop an ordinance for adoption. That has been Haley's project, and she'll be presenting on this particular item.
Yes. Again, I hope to keep this short, so please look right up. Background, in the summer of 2020, so just over a year ago, we did receive inquiries from a property owner about the potential for locating a pawn shop in the New Market downtown area. Just in responding to those inquiries and reviewing the city code, it was determined that, as of right now, our city code does not have any specific regulations related to pawn shops or similar retail-type shops.
And it would be permitted in any zoning district that allows retail.
This quickly led to concerns by city staff, and as Tom mentioned, the council did adopt a moratorium on the establishment of pawn shops, and then also directed staff to consider city controls to regulate these.
So, that moratorium was adopted on September 24th of 2020 and lasted one year, so it has since expired. And for this slide, I'm gonna invite Chief Jewell to discuss some of the public safety concerns which led to these regulations.
So, I went through a similar process in Chaska prior to coming here. Scott County has several pawn shops in different cities throughout the northern portion of the county. Pawn shops, to not beat around the bush, are basically legal fences for stolen property. Many items that are stolen do not have serial numbers, and there's no proof of ownership with them. Pawn shops are ways for people to turn stolen items into cash is the basic premise. In working many, as a detective, in working many stolen item cases, oftentimes, these would turn up at pawn shops near Chaska, and that's the basis of my opinion. It's not personal, it's professional. Many items are stolen due to drug habits and drug addictions, and the need for people who cannot work due to their drug addictions, it's a way for them to make money to supply that. I've worked easily hundreds of cases and know of hundreds of cases where the items end up at stolen fenced properties. May I advance? Pawn shops create a huge demand on law enforcement. You might think, well, how is that? Well, pawn shops, and part of this ordinance is requiring the pawn shops to register everything that comes in that has a serial number onto what is, they've changed the name, but it's called an automated pawn network. Everything that has a serial number will get entered in. Whenever somebody pawns something, they must show a photo ID, a state-controlled photo ID, when they pawn that item. You might be thinking, well, that's a great thing, because if you recover stolen property, you know who pawned it. It is a good thing, and oftentimes, you can get that property back to the owner, but in order to do that, it takes an extreme amount of law enforcement labor to do that. Oftentimes, not netting charges, because the burden of proof to show that that person stole that item is extremely hard. So, you're doing a lot of work not to recover somebody else's property and not getting charges from it. So, it's not doing society good that you're charging people criminally for this. So, it takes a ton of time, not just on, for our city, crimes committed in our city, but we will be doing work for other communities, because what is gonna happen is, when you steal something in one community, you don't go to that community to pawn it, you go to another community, because the locals will know what was stolen and can easily check. So, we'll get Blaine, Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park stolen items down here. Those agencies don't wanna drive all the way, so they call the local jurisdictions that have the pawn shop, and we have to spend our time investigating their crimes. It's just, no one has the resources. So, it's not only our community, but it is other communities impacted that we do the work for them without getting any of the, not helping our citizens. Just as you can imagine, if you go into a pawn shop, you see cell phones, home electronics, construction tools are huge. Many of our stolen construction tools from our sites end up at pawn shops, because people just don't record those serial numbers, and there's no way to get it back. Moths to a flame theory. When you have the pawn shop, there's criminals coming to that pawn shop. Oftentimes, that can lead to them being in our area and taking advantage of our community members. Someplace close, they might not pawn it here, but we're bringing them to our community, which is not exactly what you want. This will put our city on the map for people we don't really wanna be here, and as not having a pawn shop near here, we're gonna attract people, obviously not everyone that uses a pawn shop is a criminal, but there are many that do. They're not, they're gonna be coming from Owatonna, they're gonna be coming from Northfield, they're gonna be coming from south of us a ways to get to our pawn shops, because theirs, they've been banned from, or they've been found pawning stolen items. So, the benefit to the community is not there to bring this type of business in or to not have it regulated. So, when I was working with Haley on this and we were working together, I pointed them to Chaska's ordinance. Chaska does not have pawn shops because of their ordinance, and if we are the mechanism, are you gonna go over the mechanisms of it? Okay. I'll let her do that. Before, though, any questions about that from, on my part? I'm trying to go quick, so. I just don't, trying to paint a picture quickly, Bob Ross-like. All right.
So, as staff moved forward with research on what the most common city controls or what our regulations should be, we found that pretty much any city that regulates pawnbrokers or pawn shops is through a business license. So, this is Title IV of the city code, it's under the purview of the city council, it's not required to be reviewed by the planning commission. However, some cities, in regards to the zoning ordinance, do list pawn shops as a specific use. It is staff's opinion that we should just continue to allow them as retail, but then, of course, still require a business license. So, as of right now, there are no proposed zoning ordinance amendments, just the amendments to the business license section. So, as stated, this is Title IV, and the proposed ordinance amendments create a new Chapter 11 specific to pawnbrokers and precious metal dealers. As stated, it requires both to apply for a business license, and the draft ordinance is, of course, attached in the packet, so I'm not gonna go over it in detail, but some notable provisions are just the outline of the license application requirements, specific eligibility criteria, the requirement of a background check, associated fees in regards to the background investigation, the annual license, and billable transactions, the requirement of a $10,000 bond. There is also a provision for a per capita limit on licenses based on the population, the requirement that all transactions are reported to the PD, as Brady stated, and then, of course, it outlines criteria for denial, suspension, or revocation of a license. So, in association with consideration or adoption of regulations specific to pawnbrokers, there is another section of the city code that would need to be amended. Section 4-1-13 basically just outlines a list of city licenses that requires a background check. So, we would be adding pawnbrokers and precious metal dealers to that list, and then, kind of separately from pawnbrokers, this ordinance amendment also removes solicitors from the list of licenses that requires a background check. This is correcting an oversight from a previous amendment that was made in 2019. At that time, solicitors were kind of revised to, instead of requiring a license, require just a straightforward registration, and with the registration, a background check was no longer required. So, we just need to strike that from the list. And then, finally, in association with any regulations, we need to amend the 2021 schedule of fees. So, you can see the fees stated here for the investigation fee, the annual license, a new manager investigation fee, and then the billable transaction fee. These are equivalent with what we currently require for a sexually-oriented business license, and then Chief Jewell has also opined that these fees are sufficient to cover the resources necessary to run these background checks and do the investigation. So, at this time, staff is just asking the council to consider ordinance number 236, ordinance number 237, and ordinance number 238.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Tell me about the billable transaction fee and what that means. Like, for every transaction that's done, there's a fee charged, and how is that determined?
Yeah, so your interpretation is basically correct. For any item that is pawned, there is a billable transaction fee. My understanding is that is because with every transaction, they have to report it to the police, which then creates a demand on our officers, so a fee is charged to try and cover that as best as we can. The $1.50 is pretty much standard across all cities, so every community, that was the amount.
And that is only on items that somebody's trying to sell there and not purchase, correct?
Correct.
Pawn, when somebody pawns something there, that would be their fee. It's passed on usually to the customer.
So, this kinda feels like, hey, we'll have an ordinance, we'll allow you to come in our city, but we really don't want you. Is that an unfair assessment?
I don't know if I wanna speak to that, but based on my conversations with Chief Jewell, who is maybe more familiar with this, that would be fair.
Okay.
It would be, if you're gonna come here, we're gonna make sure that the taxpayers aren't...
Paying for your business to be here.
So, are we under any obligation to allow pawn shops?
Can you expand?
Can we say no pawn shops? Yeah, can we just say no pawn shops? Can we restrict, no? Okay.
So, the best we can do is we can regulate them to the degree that it reduces, mitigates the impact to our residents, and with the fees, we can't make them punitive, but we can make sure that they're set to fully recover the cost that it takes to administer the license and implement it.
I will note, too, that when doing the research, the ordinance language in almost all the cities is very similar, almost word for word exactly the same, so it's not uncommon.
So, these fees are basically unilateral across the board for other cities, the 1,500, the 5,000, the 250?
I would say only for the billable transaction. They vary. Some cities are much higher, some are a little bit lower.
So, how did you come up with your fee structure?
Yeah, so the fee structure was based on what we currently charge for sexually-oriented businesses. Because they're similar in license and nature and application requirements, it made sense that they were similar in fees.
We tried to make the fees reasonable for what a background check would cost, and you're basically paying our detective or sergeant to do an extensive background that can take weeks and many hours to...
To perform.
And the annual license fees intend to cover our cost annually to administer the license, so all of those burdens on the department and administration over the course of the year, when you have that type of business in town. We would reasonably adjust it over time if we had such a business, and once we had experience, but right now, that's our business.
Okay.
All right. I mean, I guess I would just say that all of this is great, and I mean, I think it's absolutely necessary, but if somebody really wants to get around it, they just have to report their crap anyway, right? I mean, so they're gonna not, not say that they had any billable transactions today, or leave out the one that I brought in to cover me and...
There might even be statutes to cover that they have to register every item with the local jurisdiction or a commensurate program like that automated pawn network. So, there might even be something in state statute that refers to that they have to do that, but that is a risk.
Right. I mean, I guess I'm saying, let's do it in the driveway, or come over to my house. I mean, I can do anything privately, pay with cash.
People sell stolen stuff all the time on the internet, obviously, right? Craigslist and Market, Facebook Marketplace, there are very reputable pawn shops, and they will work, most pawn shops will work with law enforcement. This isn't to punish them, it's just to recover the cost to our community, basically.
Because as you can imagine, they're victims, too, when they buy something stolen, I wanna portray that, too. When they buy something stolen, we come, they might give $500 for high-end electronics something, we come and take that from them. So, they're victimized, too, because they gave money, you know, out, but, so.
So, we had a temporary moratorium on these until we could come up with an ordinance. We came up with an ordinance. We, it's a business we have to allow, or we have to at least provide the ability that they so chose. Does anybody have any issues with what's being proposed, or wanna make any changes? If not, can we do all these in one motion?
Motion to approve 236, 237, 238.
It's a motion by Kate?
Second.
It's a second by Amanda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, passes. Thank you.
Thanks for letting me participate.
Okay, that concludes general business. We have one item left on the books.
So, we have community survey. Council recall that in previous work session, we had Peter Loverman and Morris Loverman come up and work with the council on the suite of questions for the community survey. The council provided direction on the basic set of questions. So, Peter had updated it based on that feedback, and I provided that revised draft for your review. And then also, the council had asked Peter to come up with some sample questions related to the topic of growth and development within the community, and he indicated he would come up with a suite for you to review, give feedback on, kind of a la carte style, if you wanna use it, if you wanna use all of them, some of them, want to tweak them for your review, and so those have been provided for the council as well. I think the intent tonight is for the council to give final feedback, if possible, related to it, and then we would finalize the suite of questions, Peter would finalize the pricing based on that, and we'd have a contract on the consent agenda at the next meeting.
And he can move forward with the survey in November.
Okay. Anyone have any thoughts or comments on what was provided?
I liked the development ones.
I have no objections to anything provided, proposed.
I don't have any objections.
Amanda, you've been so quiet. You have any big objections?
Nope.
All right.
So, what I hear from the councils, you'd like the full suite of development questions to be incorporated into the overall survey. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That, I have direction, and you will get the survey finalized.
On to discussion by council. Anything? No?
Do we wanna bring up the legislative visits or questions?
Oh, yes. So, as I reported to council previously, I did talk to both our state senator and our state representative, and they are scheduled to come to future council meetings. Senator Drehan is scheduled to come to our October 28th meeting, so it'll be our next meeting, and then Representative Farr is scheduled to come to the November 18th meeting.
Given that they're coming out to give us legislative updates, we usually have a discussion beforehand to discuss, you know, what are, what are our expectations, so I can reasonably say, hey, here's the format, and touch on these items, and the council, ahead of time, also discuss what's important, because it's a time limit.
And the council, ahead of time, also discuss what's important, because it's all time limited, you can't sit there for an hour and a half. What are the things we really wanna touch on with that particular legislator? So I think it'd be good for the council to maybe take time tonight to talk about it, give me feedback, so I can let the senator's staffer know what we, what our expectations are for that, so the senator can prepare where he'd like him to.
So I, you know, the one thing I'll just say here is I keep getting heat from other mayors about wanting us to just pressure him on affordable housing, Senator Drehan. And I'm not interested in turning this into a battlefield, you know? He's a, there's been letters back and forth from his office to a number of us mayors, and again, like I said, back and forth. You know, I think maybe touching on affordable housing is something that I plan to bring up and ask him about, but it's not gonna be an hour-long session of trying to fire bullets at him.
What are they asking? Like, they want him to...
Have you read that Elkins bill or proposal? It's, that's basically what they're asking. But I, I don't want this to be an adversarial type meeting, you know, maybe touch on it, but just ask him to clarify his positions a little bit, and I'm not really interested in trying to pin him down or get into debate or anything like that with him. I think he's taken time out of his day to come talk to us and tell us about the legislative session and see what questions we have, so I just wanna keep that piece somewhat low-key. Are there other issues, are there topics that people are interested in?
From a staff standpoint, I think maybe just requesting that the senator contact us proactively when he is working on legislation that directly affects cities.
Sure.
He has warranted in the past that he would do it, but that hasn't been the practice. I think that would be useful, because then we can help give meaningful feedback while he's shaping the legislation. It's much harder to do it after it's already introduced. That might be something that would be helpful and productive.
Yeah, that's fair. Anyone else have anything? I wish we can always maybe fire ideas at you via email.
What do you find him to communicate with, the LA?
Probably early, sometime next week.
If we get you something by, I don't know, I'd say the end of this week, but maybe Monday, Tuesday of next week?
By the middle of next week, then I can roll to get something together that I can send off to Thomas as his staffer, so.
Any else?
And which superintendent?
We will have Lakeville superintendent. I have already advised the superintendent that one of the key questions that our council being interested in is future schools and facilities, and what does that look like longer term, given that there is a elementary school in Lakeville, but we are continuing to grow over the long term, to what, what does it future look for, like us for future schools in or near Elko New Market, or at least towards this end of the district. And then with that, he'll just be talking about, I think, the current school year and other general issues affecting the district, so.
I mean, if you wanna give him a heads up, he's probably all over this. I mean, I'd be curious to hear about how their transportation stuff's going, knowing that New Prague now is asking us all to opt out of certain days, and they may be canceling bus routes and stuff due to shortage of drivers. So I'd be curious if Lakeville was experiencing the same thing.
Any other discussion by council?
Motion to adjourn.
It's a motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.